Okay.
The May twenty-ninth meeting of the Milltown Borough Council will now come to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilman, Council President Ordolano?
Aye.
Councilman Shalecki?
Yes.
Councilman Reichert?
Yes.
Councilwoman Youssef?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bottalary?
Aye.
Councilman Broderick?
Aye.
Six ayes, Madam Mayor.
Will the clerk please read the open public meeting statement?
In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by a resolution dated January second, two thousand and twelve, posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building, filed in the office of the municipal clerk, and forwarded to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger Publishing Companies.
Would everyone please stand for a moment in silent prayer, which will be followed by the salute to the flag of our country.
The next item on the agenda is council minutes, and listed on the agenda are the minutes of January ninth, two thousand and twelve, regular meeting. What is your pleasure?
Move that the minutes be approved as typed.
Second.
Motion has been made by Councilwoman Youssef and seconded by Councilwoman Bottalary that the minutes be approved as typed. Is there any discussion? Being none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Ordolano?
Aye.
Councilman Shalecki?
Yes.
Councilman Reichert?
Yes.
Councilwoman Youssef?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bottalary?
Aye.
Councilman Broderick?
Aye.
Six ayes, Madam Mayor.
So moved. Next on the agenda is public hearings, and tonight we have the public hearing of the amendment to the two thousand and twelve local municipal budget for the ordinances twelve dash thirteen forty-eight, twelve dash thirteen forty-nine, and twelve dash thirteen-fifty. The amendment and the ordinances have been published according to this law, and copies have been made available to the public prior to this meeting. For amendments to the two thousand and twelve municipal budget, I will turn the meeting over to Mayor Steber and the regular Borough Council.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At this time, we will have a public hearing on the two thousand and twelve local municipal budget. At this time, I'd like to open the floor to anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this resolution. At this time, if you're interested, raise your hand. When recognized, state your name and address for the record. Being none, I will ask the clerk to please read Resolution R twelve dash one sixty-six.
Okay, this is the resolution, resolution to adopt a calendar two thousand and twelve municipal budget. Be it resolved by the mayor of Borough Council of Milltown County, Middlesex, New Jersey, that the budget be adopted and shall constitute appropriation for the purposes stated, ones there and set forth as appropriations and author 4,564,000 purposes, three hundred and twelve thousand, thirty dollars and sixty-four cents. Current fund, summary of revenues, general revenues, revenues anticipated to 744,000 dollars, based by tax purposes, four million, five hundred and sixty-four thousand, five cents, amount by taxation minimum, thousand, thirty dollars and sixty-four cents, total revenues, seven million, nine hundred and eighty-five thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three summary of appropriations, general appropriations within apps including operations including contingent, five million, two hundred and sixty-five, seven hundred and thirty dollars, per charges and statutory, seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand, excluded from cap operating, total operations excluded, dollars and ninety-four cents, municipal debt service, nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and forty cents, per charges, municipal hundred, thirty-nine thousand dollars, per front collected taxes, total appropriations, seven million, nine hundred and eighty-
Okay, you've heard the reading of this resolution. What is your pleasure? Move that this resolution be adopted? I have a motion by Councilman Murray, seconded by Councilman Fargus, that the resolution is adopted. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I don't have that here with me right now, unfortunately.
Approximately how much we used?
I'm sorry?
Approximately how much we used?
I don't recall. I don't know. I don't have the budget document with me. That's in my office.
Is there any other discuss- Being none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilman Hulston? Councilman Murray?
Aye.
Councilman Owens?
Aye.
Six ayes, Mr. Mayor.
So move this resolution is adopted. At this time, I will turn the meeting back over to Mayor Jillian Steber.
Will the clerk please read ordinance number twelve dash thirteen forty-eight by title?
Ordinance number twelve dash thirteen forty-eight, in ordinance to amend ordinance ten dash twelve ninety, ninety-seven entitled, in ordinance fixing the salaries and wages for various officials and employees of the borough of Milltown and providing for the manner of payment thereof for the years two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine and two thousand and ten, to amend salary for assistant supervisor of laborers effective May first, two thousand and twelve.
I'll now open the public hearing to the ordinance number twelve dash thirteen forty-eight. If anyone in the audience has anything that they wish to say about this ordinance, please give your name and address for the record when recognized. I'll now close the public, public hearing and ask the council for their consideration.
Move that this ordinance be adopted on second final reading published according to law.
Second. Motion has been made by Councilwoman Youssef and seconded by Councilwoman Ordolano that this ordinance be adopted and seconded by final reading and published according to law. Is there any discussion? Being none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Ordolano?
Aye.
Councilman Shalecki?
Aye.
Councilman Reichert?
Aye.
Councilwoman Youssef?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bottalary?
Yes.
Councilman Broderick?
Aye.
Six ayes, Madam Mayor.
So moved, ordinance number twelve dash thirteen forty-eight is adopted. Will the clerk please read ordinance number twelve dash thirteen forty-nine by title?
Ordinance number twelve dash thirteen forty-nine, an ordinance of the borough of Milltown in the county of Middlesex, New Jersey, appropriating three hundred and ninety thousand dollars and providing for that issuance of three hundred and seventy thousand, five hundred dollars in bonds or notes of the borough to finance the accusation, acquisition of one hundred and twenty Cothal Avenue in the borough and related expenses.
I will now open the public hearing for the ordinance number twelve dash thirteen forty-nine. If anyone in the audience has anything that they wish to say about this ordinance, please give your name and address for the record when recognized.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, my clerk, Senator Strife. Um, what's the lifespan of the, the bond for twelve thirteen forty-nine? Okay, and over the thirty-year lifespan, do you have any estimation, over the thirty-year lifespan, do you have any estimation about what the interest cost may be to the borough? Not until tomorrow. Thanks.
About Miller, Seven Barre Avenue. I'm wondering if council could tell me what the plans for Cothal Avenue are in the long run.
I'm going to refer that question to Mr. Vignolo, the borough attorney.
Right now, as everybody's aware, there are a couple of reasons that the borough needs land, uh, within the borough for various projects. One of those projects is the relocation of the substation. Frankly, there is a possibility of exchanging land, uh, with the county for the preserved open space located behind the Ice Cream Depot, and that property, uh, as that's been identified as a very viable location for the substation. Uh, so this, that, that's one use. The other is this is property located next to two borough parks, and were it not viable to use for the substation and a land swap, it could potentially, uh, be acquired, uh, perhaps with county open space money and added to the borough's open space.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I will now close the public hearing and ask the council for their consideration.
Move that this ordinance be adopted on second and final reading and published according to law.
Second. Motion has been made by Councilman Shalecki and seconded by Councilwoman Ordolano that this ordinance be adopted in second and final reading and published according to law. Is there any discussion? Being none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Ordolano?
Aye.
Councilman Shalecki?
Aye.
Councilman Reichert?
Aye.
Councilman, Councilwoman Youssef?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bottalary?
Aye.
Councilman Broderick?
Aye.
Six ayes, Madam Mayor.
So moved, ordinance number twelve, twelve dash thirteen forty-nine is adopted. Will the clerk please read ordinance number twelve dash thirteen fifty by title?
Ordinance number twelve dash, dash thirteen fifty, ordinance for the accusation of block ninety point oh one, lots two and three point oh two, one hundred and twenty Cothal Avenue in the borough of Milltown, county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey.
I'll now open the public hearing for the ordinance number twelve dash thirteen fifty. If anyone in the audience has anything that they wish to say about this ordinance, please give your name and address for the record when recognized. I'll now close the public hearing and ask the council for their consideration.
Move that this ordinance be adopted on second and final reading and published according to law. Second.
Motion has been made by Councilwoman Ordolano and seconded by Councilman Shalecki that the ordinance be adopted on second and final reading and published according to law. Is there any discussion? Being none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Ordolano?
Aye.
Councilman Shalecki?
Aye.
Councilman Reichert?
Aye.
Councilwoman Youssef?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bottalary?
Aye.
Councilman Broderick?
Aye.
Six ayes, Madam Mayor.
So moved, ordinance number twelve dash thirteen fifty is adopted. Next, there's a receipt of bids, and we have none for this evening. Next, we have comments or questions from the audience on the resolutions listed in the agenda. If you have any comments or questions, please use the microphone in the center of the room and give your name and address for the record when recognized. Remember, comments and questions are limited to the resolutions listed to the agenda.
Uh, good evening, Michael McKee, Senator Strife. Um, could I get an explanation regarding AAC zero one on bills and claims? The top one, AAC zero one. The A and A construction?
We could only know that person's property. They went to court and everything, and we, um, we had it cleaned up. We had an outside contractor come in and clean it up. I believe it's maybe either the first or second property next to the convenience store.
Right.
The judge ordered the cleanup, and we put the lien on the property.
Okay, thank you.
Eric Seventy Rev Avenue, I have a question on, uh, Resolution R twelve one sixty-four about the Skywatch surveillance. At the last council meeting, it was mentioned that Milltown would be responsible for transporting, manning, and yet I read an article in the for Spotswood because the county was going to cover transportation and manning the booth. They got a different deal than Milltown? Not that I know of. Who's, uh, who was looking into that? Mike, do you recall? Regarding the Skywatch, we were going to have some more information.
But we would have the same agreement as one agreement with all-
That's what I assumed, but-
Between them, so if-
Reading the comments-
They're going to move it, which would be similar to the, um, the Showmobile that we use. They bring that in. Different.
They bring in that, uh, pavilion? Yeah, the, the, uh, the-
They bring in this, uh-
Bring it in, right, because they're the ones, uh-
They're going to have the right hitches and everything, you might- However, it's transport-
Anyone else? I'll now close audience comments. Next is bill and claims. Will the clerk please read Resolution R twelve dash one five one?
Be it resolved by the Borough Council of the Borough of Milltown County and Middlesex, state of New Jersey, that all bills, claims, and statements against the borough, listing attached heretofore have been duly itemized, audited, approved, and signed by the proper officers of the borough, be in the same or ordered paid in total amount of seven million, seventy-two thousand, three hundred dollars and sixty-eight cents.
You've heard the reading of this resolution. What is your pleasure?
Move that this resolution be adopted.
Second. Motion has been made by Councilwoman Youssef and seconded by Councilwoman Ordolano that this resolution be adopted. Is there any discussion? Being none, will the clerk, being none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Ordolano?
Aye.
Councilman Shalecki?
Aye.
Councilman Reichert?
Aye.
Councilwoman Youssef?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bottalary?
Aye.
Councilman Broderick?
Aye.
Six ayes, Madam Mayor.
So moved, this resolution is adopted. Next, we have reports of standing committees and an introduction of resolutions. A consent resolution has been prepared to cover the thirteen resolutions listed on the agenda. If any member of the council wants any resolution acted upon individually, please give me the resolution number, and it will be pulled from the consent resolution. There being no request, will the clerk please read the consent resolution?
Whereas pursuant to the rules of council, the council may establish a consent agenda for any regular or special meeting, and whereas the borough clerk has posted a consent agenda for this meeting. Now therefore be it resolved by the borough clerk in the borough of the borough of Milltown, middle, county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey, that the consent agenda previously prepared by the borough clerk be approved without the necessity of having individual resolutions read by the borough clerk.
You've heard the reading of this resolution. What is your pleasure?
Move that this resolution be adopted.
Second. Motion has been made by Councilwoman Ordolano and seconded by Councilman Broderick that this resolution be adopted. Is there any discussion? Being none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Ordolano?
Aye.
Councilman Shalecki?
Aye.
Councilman Reichert?
Aye.
Councilwoman Youssef?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bottalary?
Aye.
Councilman Broderick?
Aye.
Six ayes, Madam Mayor.
So moved, this resolution is adopted. Next, I'll be reading my report. Last week, United States Congressman Rush Holt held a press conference here in Town Hall to announce the U.S. Post Office pledge to reopen a full-service postal facility here in Milltown. I again wish to thank the good congressman for meeting with the postal service representatives and me for brokering the agreement on Milltown's behalf. The list of financial grants we've applied for and are looking into for this year include the Middlesex County Sustainable Economic Growth Improvement Fund, the Recreation Opportunities for Individuals with Disabilities Program, the history grants from Middlesex County Cultural and Heritage Commission, the New Jersey Highway Traffic and Safety for Speed Enforcement and Aggressive Driving Two Thousand and Twelve Drive Sober or Get Pulled Over Grant, and the New Jersey Department of Transportation Grants. We have already received a Clean Communities Grant and a Shade Tree Grant. I have instructed the business administrator to keep all lists of grants we have obtained in the past for her and our department heads to aggressively search out and pursue any financial grants. There'll be other grant opportunities that arise during the year that we will examine. In our monthly department head meetings, we have been discussing various management techniques and the purchase of computer software that'll bring Milltown to the century. This will allow for online billing payments, the inventory of assists, and daily labor management. This will also give us the ability to improve residential services, track day-to-day operations, and create short and long-range financial, financial plans. It'll make it possible to make long, accurate, long-term pan, plans for capital expenditures. I propose that the council updates the two wall plaques honoring the past council members and mayors and to pla, that displays them prominently in Borough Hall. I wish to discuss this in the June agenda meeting. Perhaps the borough clerk can compile a list of the names and the missing honories to get a price, to have the plaques updated. First, we'll hear from the Department of Public Works and Recycling chaired by Council President, President Sabrina Ordolano.
Madam Mayor, fellow councilmen, ladies and gentlemen, along with all regular curbside pickups, Public Works has the following report. First, the department ordered and installed the new sign for JFK Drive. The patch on Michael Avenue from a previous water main break has been paved. The installation of the flags on Main Street, JFK Drive, and Washington Avenue have been completed. South Main Street Firehouse curbing has been painted and loose siding has been reattached. Lastly, street-
Ongoing.
Here is a reminder to all the residents. Please remember that garbage cans including contents put out for collection may weigh no more than fifty pounds. Please make-
And cheap to permit ease of handling.
Metal bulk pickup is the first Wednesday of each month. No appointment is necessary, so please put out items for collection the night before, and it should be gone by Friday. Non-metal bulk is pickup is the third Wednesday of each month. There's no appointment necessary for this pickup either, but please do not put out items until the night before collection day. Please help to keep our town clean by following these simple rules. The next concrete collection is scheduled for July ninth through thirteenth. Please call extension number one eight seven to make an appointment and check channel fifteen for Public Works updates. That concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Council President Ordolano. Next, we hear from the Department of Environmental Health and Social Services chaired by Councilman Kyle Shalecki.
Mayor, council members, ladies and gentlemen, I want to report on a project for Mill Pond Park that will be called the Mill, the Mill Pond Park Nature Walk and Bird Observatory. This project will be led by Boy Scout Daniel Slover and will consist of identifying and labeling local trees along the existing path located at Mill Pond Park. There will also be a display board at the entrance of the path describing and depicting the types of trees and wildlife that may be seen along the path. Dan, along with fellow scouts and friends, will also build and install birdhouses along the Lawrence Brook. They will be working closely with the Milltown Shade Tree Commission to determine which types of birdhouses are appropriate for that area of the brook. That concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Shalecki. First, we hear from the Department of Public Safety chaired by Councilman Raymond Reichert.
Madam Mayor, fellow council members, ladies and gentlemen, I have the following police report from the, from the police department. On May sixteenth, two juveniles from Long Branch were arrested on Riva Avenue for pointing what appeared to be a semi-automatic weapon. Once police performed the felony stop, it was determined that the weapon was a paintball gun. When the occupants were searched, both had fake driver's licenses from Pennsylvania. The eighteen-year-old, both had fake driver's license, and the eighteen-year-old was released with a pending court date, and the juvenile was released to his parents. The pending court, with pending court date. Both were charged with possession of a weapon for unlawful purposes and a fake government identification. On May twentieth, police were, police were dispatched to a motor vehicle accident at Washington Avenue and Main Street. When the police arrived, one vehicle fled the scene. The driver that fled the scene was found and to be intoxicated. He was arrested for driving while intoxicated. The other was motorist, was transported to Robert Wood Johnson Hospital where he was treated and released. On May twenty-first, police arrested and charged a nineteen-year-old male from South River and a nineteen-year-old male from East Brunswick for criminal trespass and hindering apprehension. When this, when the males were questioned, they were looking for a lost dog, but later admitted to attempting to steal one of the fire hydrants that appeared not to be in use. These males were released with a pending court date. On May twenty-first, Staples reported a shoplifting in progress, but by the time police arrived, the suspect had already fled the scene. The suspect had stolen nine toner cartridges valued at seven hundred and nine dollars. The incident is under investigation. On May twenty-second, a Ford Avenue business reported a theft, their loading dock with an estimated value of six hundred dollars. The incident is under investigation. On May twenty-third, a Milltown resident was charged with receiving and stealing property. The incident is under investigation. Also on May twenty-third, police were dispatched to Acme, to Acme Food Store for a fight in the parking lot. When the police arrived, they found one victim in the parking lot that required medical attention, and the second person fled the scene. The incident is under investigation. On May twenty-fourth, a Milltown resident was arrested with charge of driving while intoxicated. He was later released with a pending court date. On May twenty-fourth, police stopped and arrested a nineteen-year-old female for possession of marijuana. She was arrested and charged with possession of marijuana and sever, and several motor vehicle summons. She was later released with a pending court date. The evidence will be transported to the New Jersey State Police Lab in Seagirt for testing, department, departmental training. All police officers and dispatchers have completed CPR, recertification, and defibrillator training. The certification, the certificate is good for two years. Sergeant Brian Cannelli and Christopher Johnson completed the twenty-four hour course of protect, proactive police supervision at the Middlesex County Training Center from April twenty-fifth to April twenty-seventh, two thousand and twelve. Training was provided at no cost to the department. Sergeant Christopher Johnson completed the forty-hour course for methods of instruction at the Middlesex County Training Center from May first to May eighth, two thousand and twelve. The training was provided at no cost to the department. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilman Reichert. Next, we hear from the Department of Parks and, Department of Parks and Recreation chaired by Councilwoman Joanna Youssef.
Madam Mayor, fellow council members, ladies and gentlemen, the deadline for the Albert Avenue Summer Recreation Program is May thirty-first. Be sure to get your registration forms in to avoid a late fee. Letters will be mailed out to all Albert Avenue Summer Recreation Camp employees within the next couple of weeks. Please be patient. Residents and non-residents will be able to sign up for pool memberships and swim lessons at the Borough Pool beginning Tuesday, June fifth. The times for registering will be Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, six P M. to eight P M. at the Borough Pool. Once the pool opens on June twenty-third, registration and pool membership will only be available for purchase during nine A M. and twelve noon daily. They will no longer be sold during normal pool hours. Please plan accordingly. We are introducing mommy-me classes this year at the pool for ages one and a half years to three years old. There will be two sessions with two time slots offered. You can sign up for them during pool badge sales hours at the pool. That concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Youssef. Next, we hear from the Department of Utilities chaired by Councilwoman Jen Bottalary.
Mayor, fellow council members, ladies and gentlemen, along with all daily pump checks, work orders, markouts, and miscellaneous calls, the department has the following report. Hydrant flushing was completed on Saturday, May nineteenth. A streetlight was repaired on Howard Street. The transformer net at the Turnpike was cleaned and weed control has, has been applied for the season to the transformer nets at Ford Avenue and Van Loue Avenue. Property maintenance took place at Elkins Lane Pump Station and, and the William Street Station. Weekly water samples were taken. Reminder, the utility department monitors the streetlights and fire hydrants, but can always use a public's help. If residents see a problem with a streetlight or a fire hydrant, please contact the utility department at seven three two, eight two eight, two one zero zero, ex, extension, one thirty-seven, to make a report. Please check channel fifteen at the Borough website for utility updates. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bottalary. Next, we hear from the Department of Finance, Administration, and Planning chaired by Council, Councilman Ryan Broderick.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, council members, ladies and gentlemen, the Department of Finance, Administration, and Planning has the following report to file. On Tuesday, May fifteenth, I met with both the Municipal Workers Union as well as the PBA number three hundred and thirty-eight. Both meetings were productive, and I am hopeful that we can come to terms shortly with both unions. Also on Tuesday, May fifteenth, I met with the code enforcement official. Again, this was a productive meeting, and he stressed and has my full support. So again, whether you're a residential or commercial property owner, you must keep your property clean, neat, and up to code, or you will be fined as per ordinance. On Tuesday, May twenty-second, I attended the Milltown Board of Health's annual free rabies clinic. The clinic was scheduled to begin at six P M. and end at eight P M. Unfortunately, at six thirty P M. then, that night, we received a call from the veterinarian responsible to administer the rabies vaccine. He advised that due to a medical emergency, that he would not, would be unable to attend the Milltown clinic. Our clinic had to be canceled. On behalf of the Borough of Milltown, I sincerely apologize for any inconvenience and want to thank Lois Patali, Paul Lawrence, Donna Swinjar, Trish, uh, Paris Condolo, sorry, and Pat Hanson for all their help and support. The next rabies clinic will be in Highland Park at four hundred and forty-four Valentine Street, their Public Works Garage, from seven P M. until nine P M. on Thursday, June seventh. The grant application for radio deterrents, pedestrian crossings, and parking lot improvements has been submitted, and we are now awaiting its approval. I, again, I cannot thank Denise Biancamano enough for getting this done on behalf of our residents. If awarded, this will make Milltown a better and safer place for everyone, and that completes my report.
Thank you, Councilman Broderick. Next, we have reports from the municipal officials. First, we'll have Borough Engineer Tolly Zax.
Madam Mayor, council members, ladies and gentlemen, tonight I have the following report. Brook Drive roadway improvements. Construction has been progressing on the roadway improvements to Brook Drive from Cothal Avenue to Hill Street, which is being funded with two grants totaling five hundred and eighty thousand dollars in the NJ DOT. Improvements completed to date include base pavement repair, new concretes, concrete curb, sidewalk, and driveway aprons and drainage improvements. Final surface course, pavement, and tree planting will be completed in the near future. Electric substation improvements. Improvements-
Improvements at the electrical substation, which provides the borough with its electricity, are ongoing. The refurbishment of the substation's twelve breakers is nearly completed. The borough is currently out to bid for additional improvements to the substation, which will include the installation of a standby emergency generator, transfer switch, and load bank, unit heaters, video camera, sub pumps, flood barriers, and conduit sealer. Bids are scheduled to be received on June fifth. Sanitary sewage system improvements. A contract for these improvements was recently awarded, and construction is scheduled to begin shortly. The improvements, which are being funded by low-interest loans from the NJ DEP, include the elimination of the Washington Avenue Pumping Station and the installation of a gravity sewer under the Lawrence Brook connecting to the Church Street Pumping Station. Additionally, the aerial gravity sewer located on Vanderbilt Avenue that crossed over the Lawrence Brook will be replaced. Church Street Pump Station improvements. Contract for these improvements was recently awarded, and the construction is scheduled to begin shortly. The improvements, which are being funded by low-interest loans from the NJ DEP, include the installation of two new dry pit submersible pumps. Additional improvements include wet well lighting, installing new conduit and wiring, and painting in the dry well. South Street area roadway improvements. The borough has received an initial grant in the amount of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars and recently was awarded a supplemental grant in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars resulting in the total of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the NJ DOT, which for these roadways roadway improvements. As a result of this supplemental funding, the original bond ordinance adopted for this project will be amended to reflect the additional funding. Initial construction costs, estimates, and the scope of the proposed improvements are currently being developed. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Borough Attorney Jacob Williams.
Mayor Steber, council members, ladies and gentlemen. Currently working on the following legal matters and pending litigation. Fifty Washington Avenue. The borough has obtained permission to enter onto the property to conduct the necessary inspections to determine the condition of the property. It is anticipated that the inspection should incur during the first two weeks of June two thousand and twelve. Shade Tree Ordinance. I have received the proposed provisions to the Shade Tree Ordinance from the Shade Tree Committee. I am currently reviewing the process, the proposed provisions to ensure the compliance with the New Jersey law. Property Maintenance. Received a copy of the two thousand and twelve International Maintenance Code from the Borough Zoning Officer. Under the borough's ordinances, the code provides the relevant standard for property maintenance within the borough. I'm reviewing the code to identify any revisions that assist the borough in obtaining compliance with the code's requirements. Additionally, together with the special legal counsel, I'm continuing to take necessary steps to comply with the ruling of the Judge Hurley in Ford Avenue litigation. Finally, I'm continuing to analyze the available records to determine the
Thank you. In addition, we'll have Chief Finance Officer Adam Moore.
Honorable Mayor, council members, ladies and gentlemen. For the period ending April thirtieth, two thousand and twelve, the final amount of interest has been earned on investments. The current fund is six thousand two hundred and forty-one cents. Bills will be mailed within the next couple of weeks. That concludes my report, Honorable Mayor.
Thank you. Lastly, we'll have Borough Clerk Katie Mangarella.
Mayor Steber, council members, ladies and gentlemen. I just want to remind everyone that next Tuesday, June fifth, is primary election day. The polls will be open from six A M. to eight P M. Voters in districts one, two, three, and four vote at the Joyce Kilmer School Gym, and voters in districts five, six, seven, eight, and nine vote at the Senior Citizens Center. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Listed on the agenda is the report of the zoning officer for the months of March and April two thousand and twelve. I will accept the motion to receive and file this report.
Move that these reports be received and filed?
Second. Motion has been made by Councilman Strelucky and seconded by Councilwoman Ordolano that the report of the zoning officer for the months of March and April two thousand and twelve be received and filed. Is there any discussion? Being none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Ordolano?
Aye.
Councilman Strelucky?
Aye.
Councilman Reichert?
Aye.
Councilwoman Youssef?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bottalary?
Aye.
Councilwoman Broderick?
Aye.
Six ayes, Madam Mayor.
So moved. Next on the agenda is the introduction of ordinances, and there are two ordinances for consideration. Will the clerk please read ordinance number twelve dash thirteen fifty-one by title?
Ordinance number twelve dash thirteen fifty-one. An ordinance of the Borough of Milltown in the county of Middlesex, New Jersey, amending ordinance number eight dash twelve eighty-two, and the borough finally adopted December eighth, two thousand and eight, providing for primarily design and construction of a new firehouse, and major repairs and reconditioning of fire engines and apparatus in, and for both the Borough of Milltown and appropriating three hundred and fifty thousand dollars therefore, and providing for the issuance of three hundred and thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars in general improvement bonds or notes of the Borough of Milltown to finance the same.
You've heard the reading of ordinance number twelve dash thirteen fifty-one by title. What is your pleasure?
Move that this ordinance be adopted on first reading, published according to law, and that a public hearing be held at the next regularly scheduled council meeting on June eleventh, two thousand and twelve, at seven thirty P M. in council chambers.
Second.
Motion has been made by Councilwoman Ordolano and seconded by Councilman Broderick that this ordinance be adopted on first reading, published according to law, and that the public hearing be held on the next regularly scheduled council meeting on June eleventh, two thousand and twelve, at seven thirty P M. at the Borough Hall. Is there any discussion? Being none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Ordolano?
Aye.
Councilman Strelucky?
Aye.
Councilman Reichert?
Aye.
Councilwoman Youssef?
Nay.
Councilwoman Bottalary?
Nay.
Councilman Broderick?
Aye.
Four ayes, Madam Mayor.
So moved. This ordinance is adopted on the first reading. Will the clerk please read ordinance number twelve dash thirteen fifty-two by title?
Ordinance number twelve dash thirteen fifty-two. An ordinance of the Borough of Milltown in the county of Middlesex, New Jersey, amending ordinance number eleven dash thirteen twenty-nine, finally adopted April twenty-fifth, two thousand and eleven, providing for road improvements to the South Street area in the Borough of Milltown and appropriating seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars therefore, and providing for the issuance of eighty thousand dollars in bonds or notes of the Borough of Milltown to finance the same.
You've heard the reading of ordinance number twelve dash thirteen fifty-two by title. What is your pleasure?
Move that this ordinance be adopted on first reading, published according to law, and that a public hearing be held the next regularly scheduled council meeting on June eleventh, two thousand and twelve, at seven thirty P M. in council chambers.
Second.
Motion has been made by Councilman Strelucky and seconded by Councilwoman Ordolano that this ordinance be adopted on first reading, published according to law, and that the public hearing be held on the next regularly scheduled council meeting on June eleventh, two thousand and twelve, at seven thirty P M. at Borough Hall. Is there any discussion? Being none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Ordolano?
Aye.
Councilman Strelucky?
Aye.
Councilman Reichert?
Aye.
Councilwoman Youssef?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bottalary?
Nay.
Councilman Broderick?
Aye.
Five ayes, Madam Mayor.
So moved. This ordinance is adopted on first reading. Next, we have the communications. Will the clerk please read the communication by title?
Letter from from Milltown Fourth of July Committee requesting permission to hold an annual tagging event on June ninth and tenth of two thousand and twelve.
You've heard the reading of this communication by title. What is your pleasure?
Move that this letter be received and filed, that permission to be granted, and that copies be forwarded to the police department.
Second.
Motion has been made by Councilwoman Youssef and seconded by Councilwoman Bottalary that this letter be received and filed, that permission be granted, and the copies be forwarded to the police department. Is there any discussion?
We've discussed this tagging before, and I didn't have it placed on the next agenda meeting, that we can get something rolling and decision on how tagging events, say, after September. Sounds good to
Put it in the letter if you approve it. It's that it refers them to the police department for the
I understand that, but in regards to tagging in the street, we've discussed this before. Wanted to get something on the meeting that we have a permanent solution on how we're going to handle all tagging events in the future. Nothing regarding affecting this tag day for the people we approve already.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Ordolano?
Aye.
Councilman Strelucky?
Aye.
Councilman Reichert?
Aye.
Councilwoman Youssef?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bottalary?
Yes.
Councilman Broderick?
Aye.
Six ayes, Madam Mayor.
So moved. Next, we have old business. Does any council member have any old business to bring before the council this evening?
None listed on the agenda.
I will now close old business. Next, we have new business, and at this time, I'm appointing Neil R. City to the Emergency Management Committee and ask the council for confirmation.
Move that this appointment be confirmed?
Second.
Motion has been made by Councilwoman Ordolano that this appointment be confirmed. Is there any discussion?
What is Mr. R. City's Actually, I have a copy of his resume. I believe he's also an Iraqi
Is there any other discussion?
Reichert?
Aye.
Councilwoman Youssef?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bottalary?
Nay.
Councilman Broderick?
Aye.
Five ayes, Madam Mayor.
So moved. Does any member of the council have any new business to bring before the council this evening?
In regard to the cruise night that they've been having the last two months, several phone calls from people asking if they can get a rain date. Following Wednesday in case again, uh, summer will be over, so have the rain out that they move to the following Wednesday. I got a couple of and the people that usually come to bike specific move around accordingly, you know. Milltown seems to be a
We could fill in the date. People
I mean, the organization that runs it, are they on?
Uh, dang, oh shit. Possibly. me besides some other people with some phone calls. There are some websites that they can put it on there on the day I can check.
Can just, um, I certainly don't personally
It's not an additional day, just
And that would that would only be the following
Supposed to be the following
Now, are you just, we want to wait to do that, to check with them first, or? Nation that
But the, I guess what we're looking to do is make
The police department, I don't
Rescue Squad, the fire department, there's no conflict. We could have it worked, whereas if there's a rain date that they're told it's a rain date and it's going to be the following Wednesday, this way they
Does anyone want to bring up more new business? I'll now close new business. Next, we have audience comments, and at this time, I would like to recognize our civics teacher from Joyce Kilmer School, the Honorable Mr. Eric Segal.
Mr. Steber, town council and borough officials, thank you for making this a truly unique experience for our students. And for my students, you guys all did a great job. You should be very proud of yourselves. Thank you. We know it. Into that.
Thank you, Mr. Segal. If anyone in the audience has anything they wish to bring for the council at this time, please give your name and address for the record and recognized. I will now close audience comments. Next, we have council comments. Is there anything further that anyone in the council would like to bring up at this time?
Yeah, I
From the actions that
Yeah.
To accept the decisions made by the student participants. I have a motion by Councilman Ryan, Council President Ryan, seconded by Councilman Tanza, that the decisions and statements made by the student participants are now the official record of the
Any discussion? Or call the roll?
President Ryan?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I would now like to close council comments. All business having been completed, I will entertain a motion. What? Mr. Ste, Mayor Steber would like to talk, so, yeah.
Yeah, what's what's the night without a politician talking? Um, at this time, I'd just like to thank the students. Did a fantastic job. You know, every year, I've been doing this now, I don't know, ten, eleven years I've been participating in this, and every year it just seems the kids get better and better. You know, I did it in seventy-seven. We weren't too good. Lot better over the years. Uh, I asked the clerk today, uh, youth and government going been going on here in town. As far as we can tell, it's at least at least forty-eight years. So this is something that's really ingrained in the history of our town. Um, you know, look around at your friends sitting in this room. You might be sitting next to future councilman, borough clerk, mayor, borough attorney, engineer, I don't know. Nineteen seventy-seven, I was the director of recreation, and I had a lot of fun doing that, and I learned a lot, and it really helped me get involved and really interested in government. So please get involved in your local government, support your council and mayor, help make decisions. If you think see things in town that you think are wrong or need improvement, please reach out to us. We're not here to just represent your parents. We're also here to represent you. Okay? So please feel free. Again, thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to thank Jennifer Lazzo for having the kids here with us today. I've and Mrs. Gearhart, she was here earlier. Did she step out? She did? Back there? Cheryl Lynn, you back there? Nope, she's out of here. That's anyway. And and I would be certainly remiss if I didn't say thank you to our borough clerk, Mike Januska. Mike, you've been doing this forever. And with that, I'm going to be quiet and turn it back over to the mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Steber. All business, all business having been completed, I will entertain a motion that this meeting be adjourned. So moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion has been made by Councilwoman Bottalary and seconded by Councilman Broderick that this meeting is adjourned. It's non-negotiable, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed?
All opposed? Meeting adjourned.